Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our City Council Successor Agency meeting of October the first at 6:00 p.m. Before we start, we'd like to invite everyone to go with, pay the pledge of allegiance with me. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do. There was going to be a special meeting that ran concurrent with the regular meeting, and that item was going to be added to the regular agenda to take concurrently, and that item has been pulled and tabled for a later date, so we only have the regular agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So do we have a motion for council's approval of the agenda?
No move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Our next item is awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have two items. Our first item is AMI Water Metering Pilot Program, and the presentation is mine, Larry Miller. Larry?
Hello, everyone. Hope you're all having a fine evening. I'm trying to, here we go, running a little bit slow. Okay, so I just wanted to take a few minutes to show you something that Public Works is very excited about. We will be launching an AMI metering pilot program. I'm not sure if you are aware of AMI is, but it is essentially smart meters, like what you would see with PG&E, where you can see your usage real time, and this will be just for the water system, and it will be handled via a cellular signal from each independent water meter. This will happen like over four months. That's how long that the term of the program is, and it's going to be extended to four residents within each of voting area, five businesses, four staff, and one city-owned property. Like I said before, this will only be for water. Natural gas will be a little bit more intricate, and we're not really ready for that yet. And the point of this is to see how well that it works, and if there's going to be like any issues with it moving forward. So, starting, you know, now, you would be able to apply on the city website. The link is as shown, but for those who are on the phone and can only hear, you can find that on the Public Works page on the city website, or you can apply by phone, and you can call Kristy Anderson at (935) 1533, extension 150. There will be some things needed to be able to be a part of this program. We are going to ask that you, every once in a while, give a feedback. I think the interval will probably be like weekly, so we'll send you a form, or like, we'll ask you things, and that, so we just ask that you, you know, return with, you know, what you think about it, and just answer some of our things. At the start of it, there's also going to be a staff-led, you know, lesson on how to use it. We need, you know, we need to actually be sure that everyone in the actual program will be able to utilize everything so that they can, you know, fully explore what it is that will be available. For this, it's going to be best if the person has like a two devices, one to be able to see, you know, the meeting, and then, you know, another device to be able to like interface with, you know, the actual program, or for those of you who have multiple monitors at home, that would also work. The installation would be really brief. It is actually going to be utilizing a meter that we have approximately 400 to 500 out there already, and if that is the case, it's going to be just a few seconds just to get you all set up. But for those of you who do not have this meter installed yet, this would just take, you know, 20 minutes for a maintenance worker to install this new water meter, and all this will be done for free. We're not going to be billing you anything for the installation. As to when this will happen, like I said, we hope to be accepting everyone now, and then the installations, you know, probably two to three weeks from now, and then, you know, we will let people know once they have been selected. And then after that, we're hoping to go live in November, but that may take longer. We're not sure on the timeframe on when we're actually receiving the endpoints to make this all happen. With that, I will accept anything that you guys have to ask me, and hopefully I can be of a help.
Any questions, council? Are there other cities, Larry, involved in this program?
No, this is actually done through Badger, who is a supplier for our meters. It's just a program of theirs that they offer, and we're just looking to see if, you know, we can extend into like a full integration in the future.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Sean, just to kind of add a little bit. The, these AMI-type meters have been, are used in several different jurisdictions, but as Larry mentioned, this is a pilot program that Badger's offering at a, pretty much at a discounted price to get a hold of some of these endpoints, which are just adapter to the actual meter, to see how it's going to integrate with our system, and just to gather feedback from our residents that are part of the pilot program. And it's going to be able to allow our residents and our businesses to be able to track kind of real-time water consumption, leak detection, so there's a lot of, you know, real-time information that can be generated from these, as well as the metering, the actual meter reading side of it is a lot easier because we receive the data real-time as well, instead of actually having to go and touch every meter and read it once a month. So, we're hoping to see, going down the road, there's grant funds down the line to be able to, you know, possibly implement this long-term.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, council? Thank you very much, Larry. Moving on. We're here for Mr. Brewer on Capitol Street Project, this update for 2020. Sean, are you on mute?
Yeah, I'm on mute.
Okay. Okay. We are going to get this down sooner or later.
We are. So now you can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, I get a second chance of this. This is good. All right, so we wanted to go ahead and update the council, and as you can see, it looks like I expect to do this on the 15th, and we were able to get this presentation finalized quicker, so we're here today on October 1st. Just wanted to give the council and the community some updates on a bunch of the street projects we've got going on currently in the works, and then also in the future. As we know, these projects take some time, especially the majority of our projects are grant-funded, so they take time to go through that process from design to implementation and the construction, so just wanted to kind of get everybody, kind of see, so everyone's kind of aware of what's on the horizon moving forward. So we've got some recently completed projects. We've got the Forest and Elm project, the Phelps project, our ATP Cycle 2 sidewalk project, and then the Gale Avenue overlay project. And just for some terms, ATP is the Active Transportation Program. They do a grant cycle every year, and this has been starting, and we are now in Cycle 5 that we recently applied for. So the Forest and Elm project, that was the last phase of our improvements on Forest. That is the first Elm segment. It was funded through the Regional Surface Transportation Program, which is a federal grant program, which is now called the Surface Transportation Improvement Program, so there's a lot of acronyms. And in terms of funding, that was about a $1.4 million project. The improvements, as people have seen on Forest, was the complete reconstruction of that road, new curb and gutter, sidewalks, streetlights that will be illuminated soon, I promise. PG&E is working a little slow. Crosswalks, we did some storm drain improvements, sewer and waterline improvements as well. And basically, we are, construction is complete. We're just awaiting PG&E to energize the streetlights, and then there'll be some final revisions on the project, and we'll be complete. In terms of the Phelps improvements, this was funded through our local Measure C flexible funding account, and there were some leftover 2009, and that's not a typo, that's 2009 RDA revenue bond proceeds. Phelps Avenue is actually the last project listed on that bond, and since it had not been spent, we were able to utilize just under $400,000 of those funds to help support the, this project. From its inception to its construction, costs skyrocket in terms of increases. I think this project was originally scoped at about 500,000, and as you can see, the total cost on this project was 1.1 million. It included the complete reconstruction of the street, curb gutter and sidewalk, new streetlights, had landscaping, and then also kind of the first little segment of our multi-use trail, and that was completed in September. There's still some minor corrections being done right now, but the project is substantially complete. And then the ATP Cycle 2 Sidewalk Gaps Project, that was through the Active Transportation Program. That funding amount was $393,000 with approximately $70,000 in local funding, as the 11% match is required on these projects. That basically fixed sidewalk gaps, basically areas where there was no sidewalks, also crosswalks and curb ramps, and additional sidewalks as well, or replacement of some sidewalks, and that was completed back in March of 2019. And then recently, the Gale Avenue Overlay Project, which was funded through the Transportation Development Act funds, those are also local street funds, that was in the funding amount of $96,000, and that was a complete reconstruction, new curb gutter, actually, that's not correct, I apologize. This was basically an overlay project on Gale Avenue, and so this project was completed. I think they finished it in about two weeks, but it was just an overlay on that failing section of Gale. In terms of, the other project was the Center Median Improvements, as you've seen throughout town, that was with Measure C flexible funding, that was funded with Measure C at $300,000, and they cleared and grubbed the area, they recompacted the subgrading, they applied a weed barrier, and there was installation of rock material, boulders, and cobble of various center median islands throughout town, and that project was officially completed in August of this year. Some of the projects we have over in the horizon, we have some, a bunch of projects that we have approved, projects that are awaiting funding allocation, but these, it's exciting to talk about a lot of these projects, because I think they're going to have some big impact in town. We have a project that was funded back in the 2015-2016 Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Fund. This project was delayed, unfortunately, due to some funding constraints we had, due to some of the audit issues that have been fixed, which is great, and it's allowed us to activate a lot of these projects that have been in the works for quite some time. The grant funding amount is $60,000 with about a $70,000 local match. It's a complete reconstruction of the alley, and also including new drive approaches at each end of the alleys. Design is complete, and construction is expected to start sometime in spring of next year. We recently received another round of funding into the 2019-2020 CMAC application cycle, and that funding amount was 681,000, and that's a complete reconstruction of the alleyways and new drive approaches. Design will begin sometime in 2021, and then construction is expected in 2022. Just a little tidbit on this one, yes?
One, just for a minute. Could you please tell everyone what CMAC stands for, please?
It's called the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Program. So projects related to CMAC funding have to have some type of air quality improvement, where alley projects have been great candidates, because it's about a cost-benefit ratio to particulate matter, which they call PM10. It's the particulate matter that's created, so a dirt road to an asphalt road has great cost-benefit, where an asphalt road to a patched asphalt road is not really a cost-benefit, because it's not creating a lot of dust or additional particulate matter. So when we're dealing with alleys, you know, a lot of our alleys are failing, some of them are still dirt, so we're focusing on those, and then we're continuing to gradually get to the ones that are in need of rehabilitation, secondary rehabilitation. And so that's the next phase, and so CMAC has been a good candidate for those types of projects. We also have the Cambridge Signalization. This project has a contract awarded. It says that we're under construction, the funding amount is $436,000, and this is under Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds, this is called HSET, and this is going to be the full signalization of Cambridge and Elm, including some striping, some curb and gutter, and some additional lighting. This project should relatively go, it should go relatively quick under, once under construction. We're just waiting on some last-minute details from Caltrans on our encroachment permits, as well as we're going through all of the submittals from the contractor at this time. So this should be starting, I'm hoping, any week in the next month or so, we should see some movement on that project. The next big project is our Active Transportation Program Cycle 3 Sidewalk Gaps Program. This was, this is a $1.2 million project. It includes new sidewalks, crosswalks, curb ramps, curb extensions, school assembly signage, and striping. This has had a lot of school district coordination in terms of improvements around the schools. Design is currently underway, and we're hoping to see construction sometime in spring of 2021. For anyone that can see the slide, you can see that, you know, basically areas of red are areas where there's no curb ramps, or maybe kind of that curb, but it's not an actual ramp at the corners. All of those are being replaced. All the blue is sidewalk. All of the green areas are new crosswalks, and basically the purple area is your boundaries. So from Polk Street to Monterey to pretty much all the way to Cambridge, all the way down Sunset, back to Polk, so it's got a big scope, and it's, the goal is to really address a lot of the sidewalk issues that we have at this time. We also have some more CMAC money, which another style, another project that's really popular right now under that Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Program are trails. And as you know, we have our multi-trail master plan, and so we were awarded $1.4 million in the recent 2019-2020 CMAC funding cycle. This will be the construction of segments 1, 2, and 13. As you know, partially, part of segment 1 is already constructed on Phelps from Elm to Poste Cheneau, but this will include the remainder from Poste Cheneau to this, to the hospital, and then also segments 2, which is on the south side of the creek, and then also section 13, which is the section that's along the sports complex from Monterey to about Sunset, where it crosses over the drive approach there into the new sports complex. So that project is expected to start design this current fiscal year, probably towards the latter part of, probably latter part of spring. Then we have to go through right-of-way acquisition, which is going to be in 21-22, and then construction will be in fiscal year 22-23. Unfortunately, the way these projects are set up is that you typically have funding cycles within fiscal years, and you have processes through the design, right-of-way, and construction phases, and so sometimes these projects take longer, but if we get ahead, we're able to attempt to request funds ahead of time or sooner, rather than waiting until the expected timeframes. We also have ATP Cycle 4. This funding was $885,000, and this is to construct segments 3, 4, and 9 of our master plan. This is going to, this is one that is currently under environmental review. As you recall, we approved a contract with SWCA Environmental Consultants to undertake the, what we call, environmental analysis of these segments, and we are currently in that process. And then, once we are done with that process, we will go through design right-of-way, and then we'll be in construction hopefully sometime in 22-23. They seem like a far, it seems far away, but it seems like time flies these days, and we'll be there in no time under construction with a lot of these segments, which will be a great addition to the community. And again, another trail project that we have that's currently in design is a Lifeline project. This is, these are funds that we, that are non-competitive, that the city is entitled to in each, every two years when the program is advertised, and we have segments 10 through 12, which is basically the stretch of Monterey from Lucille to Cambridge, and that's almost roughly $600,000, and we have about a local match of 119,800. However, we are using CMAC Lifeline for all of those funds, and so at that point, it's all funded through grant funds. Design's underway, and we're expected to see construction sometime early next year. We also have funding for segments 13 and 14, which is a project for, which is basically a project that's on the shelf pending, because it's supposed to be using Lifeline fund, accumulation of funds, but now that we have partially funded through, we're partially funded through the competitive grant, we may or may not need to use the Lifeline funds for 13, but rather just for 14. And we're hoping that eventually that will be updated, and we'll see that construction probably in line with the grant, rather than saying that the construction's going to be in 2020, although some design has been done. We also have the Polk Street improvements. These are some of the new programs that we have. This is the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. We have funding amount is $555,000 with a local match of about 51,000, and the majority of the local matches come from Measure C or Transportation Development Act funds. This is the full reconstruction with some additional sidewalk, curb gutter, and in some lighting modifications. Design is underway, and we're actually going to see construction, it says early 2020, unfortunately that was delayed, but we should see construction activity hopefully in the next few months, as we should be going out to bid here in the next few weeks. And this is the segment from Elm to Fifth Street on Polk. We also have Polk Street from Elm to the city limits. As the council mayor recall, we were recently awarded these funds through the STBG program at 670,000, and design is expected to start sometime later next year with construction the following summer, and that will be from Elm Avenue to the city limits on Polk Street. So we'll see Polk in a new light here in the next couple of years. We've also got Sunset, the Sunset Avenue Reconstruction Project from Polk Street all the way to Sixth, is that correct? Polk to Sixth, no, that's not correct. It's not to Sixth Street. This is, I'm sorry, it's Polk to Sunset. The funding program is utilizing SB1 funds. If you all recall, that's the state tax measure that was on the ballot a couple few years ago, and we've used fiscal year 19, 20, and 21 funds and CMAC Lifeline funds. This project has grown to $1.2 million as we've increased the scope. So originally, it was from Polk Street to Sixth, but as we've gone through the process and design, we've accumulated more funds through the SB1 program, so we have, we've gone back to the council a couple times to expand the scope, and this is expected to start in winter of this year, because the stat, and right now it is out to bid, we should be coming back to the council probably sometime in November, I would imagine, for bid award of this project. And with that, just entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Counsel, any questions? I would just like to say, Sean, that's incredible amount of work that you're doing, and for those listening, sometimes when we think there's nothing going on, roads need to be repaired, all these kinds of things, and we're very aware of that, and those issues are being addressed, it just takes time, and I appreciate all your hard work there, Sean. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Moving on, citizens' comments. Excuse me. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify yourself, and please use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. We have one comment from Ms. Mary Blythe Jones, and she says, "Could you read this at some appropriate time in the meeting? It could be during public comment, so it stands alone and does not disrupt the process." I was also wondering if the police and fire painting on the street could be designated and painted by local artists instead of just letters, like having a huge police shield or something more interesting. It would save time and money for the city, as well as giving the community an opportunity to be part of something going on. And then she states, "Dear Council and City Manager, Marisa Trejo, it's wonderful to see things getting back to normal. Many months ago, the City Beautification Committee met. I presented a proposal to the committee, along with a series of photos of utility boxes and possibilities around Colinga. I know a lot has happened since then, but I look forward to being able to have my community artists at Imaginarium join in this project on your utility boxes, not yet proposed by others. Thank you, Mary Blythe Jones." Do we have any other comments?
I'm seeing none now.
Seeing none. We will move on to public hearing. We have none. We voted the consent calendar. We have 13 items. Item 3 has been tabled till a later date. Item 1 is approved minutes September 17, 2020.
Mayor, sorry. Item 3 is still on. That was a separate discussion of a conference.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? You're absolutely right. I apologize. All right, let's start again. The minutes September 17, check register August 1st through August 31st. Item 3 is adopt resolution number 3986, amending the city's Conflict of Interest Code regarding designated employees and disclosure categories as required by the Political Reformation Act, and approving the 2020 Local Agency Biennial Notice. Item 4 is information on public camera registration program. Item 5, authorize police department to declare a 2005 Ford Crown Victoria as surplus property and donate to Give Me Love. Item 6, review and approve regulatory permit for Claremont Capital Partners Limited Liability Corporation. Item 7, review and approve regulatory permit for Herb Green Company. Item 8, approve the purchase of portable radios from 49er Communication for use by the Fire Department. Item 9, authorize fire chief to submit a request for proposals for a standard of cover. Item 10 is authorize city manager to work with the Elks to paint city utility boxes. Item 11, direct city manager to work with police chief and fire chief to paint, support the blue, red, or similar slogans on streets outside of each department. Item 12, direct city manager to send a letter from mayor regarding withholding of CARES Act funding to Congress. Item 13, authorize city manager to allocate and spend incorporated rural city CARES Grant Program funds as identified. Is there any item that you would like to pull or discuss, council?
I'd like to pull 5 and 11.
Okay, is this the number 5? Go ahead. On number 5? On number five?
Darren, are you on?
He shows on the call, he may just be muted.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I'll, I'll let you talk first.
Let me pull up the staff. I was approached by Give Me Love regarding a donation of one of our old vehicles that's been sitting in the back parking lot for probably two years now, collecting dust and, and not being used by the department. I did some checking on this vehicle. This vehicle had low blue book runs about three hundred and twenty-four dollars for per to sell, and that's a fair condition. If it was in excellent condition, it would go for twelve hundred dollars. We don't use this vehicle anymore. And if we had to have Give Me Love purchase the vehicle, they would be willing to pay the, the low blue book for the vehicle if the council wishes to go that route.
So I, I think that we should offer it to them at the low blue book value at three. I don't have the number in front of me, but it's three hundred and something.
Three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four, as opposed to, you know, just giving it away for free.
Okay, it's council's decision, and I will act the way you guys want to do it.
Counsel, any other?
What would the money be used for? If we did get that three hundred and something dollars?
Generally, the money, generally, the money just gets booked as unanticipated revenue in the general fund unless you want it allocated for something specific.
Okay.
So let me ask you this. If you got the three hundred and twenty-four dollars, could you designate it to go towards the animal shelter? Is that possible?
To turn the money back around and go towards the animal shelter?
Yeah, yeah.
If that's what the council in the city wants to do, that, that's an option they can go for, I guess.
I think that we should, I think we should donate it either to the canine, to the canine or to finish some flooring in the front part of the police department.
Counsel, what do you want to do?
I'll go with the flooring or the, the canine unit.
Now, that sounds okay with me, too.
What is the actual cost of maintaining the canine per, per year? Quite a bit, right?
It averages anywhere from twelve, twelve to fifteen thousand for a good
Okay.
Solid year.
Okay. Then I would suggest that, I would like to suggest we donate the money if we are able to sell it for that amount to the canine project. Is the council agreeable with that?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, so there you go. Okay, and number eleven, direct city manager to work with police chief and fire chief to paint, support the blue, red, or similar slogans on the streets outside of each department. Tanya?
Um, I had talked with a couple officers about this, and, you know, it's kind of divided. Some are excited and some aren't, aren't so excited about having all of that hurrah around them. So I propose that maybe we ask the P O A, and I don't know, I guess you would call it the F O A. I haven't heard anything from fire, but I don't want to, you know, exclude them because they're part of this. So before I think the council makes a decision for them or the city makes a decision, I think that maybe the people that it would greatly affect should be involved in the decision-making. There's already a blue line out there.
Okay, counsel, any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't have any problem asking them what they think about it.
Okay, so would you like to suggest that we table this issue until we get a response from those two agencies? Is everybody agreeable to that, or do you want to just pursue, pursue?
Mayor, it looks like, oh, sorry. It looks like Councilman Atkinson's trying to speak, but no one can hear him.
Oh, can't hear you, Adam. I'm sorry. Is he, is he on there? If you're not muted. I don't.
Yeah, you're, you're not muted, Adam, and you've, you're promoted to a panelist, so you should be able to, to talk.
Is he on the key, not muted on his, is he on the phone?
No, he's online.
Select near the mic and check to see if your mic is selected. Somebody's typing him something.
I think Larry's trying to help with some tech support.
Hello?
Oh, there you are.
Hi.
There we go. Geez, I've been talking this whole time.
You've been talking the whole time to, to the air, huh?
Right. Only my wife had that button for me.
Okay. I'm not going to touch that one.
Okay, sorry, I gotta pull everything back up now because I had to go back out of everything and get back on. Uh, okay, where are we on?
We're on number eleven. Yeah.
All right, so. Okay, so we're gonna ask the P O A. Okay, that's fine, whatever. There's only being done for one reason, but that's fine.
Not just the P O A, they're gonna go with the fire department also.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, you had other comments, Adam, on other issues that we didn't hear you about?
No, we already passed it, but it's fine. It's okay.
Okay. And you know what? I'd like, I neglected to pull number twelve, and I would like to pull that just for a moment. It's asking the city manager to send a letter from the mayor regarding withholding of CARES Act funding to Congress. Well, I would prefer not to sign that letter in view of the fact that I was pretty adamant about not going there in the first place. So I would like to suggest that if you would like to do that, you would have the mayor pro tem sign that, or you could individually sign. I spoke with Marissa on this earlier today, and probably it would be wise to have the mayor pro tem sign that, if that's agreeable with everyone.
I have no problem signing that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through thirteen?
We gotta go over thirteen. Can you hear me?
I'm, yes, I hear you, bud.
No, we never, we didn't go over thirteen yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Authorize the city manager to allocate and spend incorporated rural city CARES grant programs fund as identified.
So, yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So we're authorizing the city manager to pay a hun, or to have a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for, it looks like about three different items. I just wanted to know from the city manager if she can kind of tell us where she plans to go with that hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and how much she plans to give each and how much are, what dollar amount do you plan to give to businesses and, and that?
Yeah, so we received some information from the county on what types of expenses we can use that money for. So listed on the staff report, the first priority that I had listed for council's consideration was to make the city whole for items that we expensed that we, that were unanticipated expenses, because otherwise we would likely end the fiscal year without a balanced budget. We had purchased a piece of sanitizing equipment for public works to sanitize playground equipment and public trash cans and benches and such. We purchased some P P E for city employees, including masks, like sanitizing spray gloves. And then also, we, there's a few other items that were purchased to make, to enable people to be able to work from home when COVID first started. That was minimal. But then also, we are able to recoup the cost of the sick leave that employees used when they were either, we did have some employees who had COVID, so while they were home with COVID, or if they were exposed to it and they had to quarantine. So that first priority, I would say, probably is going to cost about fourteen thousand dollars. It's not a whole lot, but it will, it would make the city whole for the fiscal year. And then the next item would be a small grant for, or I'm sorry, a grant for small businesses. And it sort of mirrors other cities because they've already gotten their language approved for, through Fresno County as an approved program. And so for small businesses, I think the criteria is you need at least one F T E, which is a full-time employee equivalent. And you, the business can apply for up to five thousand dollars. There are some, there are some criteria there. We did find out that businesses who get this grant, it is tax deductible, so we'll have to, or I'm sorry, it is taxed. They're taxed on the money that they would receive, so we have to send them a ten ninety-nine form. And so anyway, that's sort of how that would work. The application period would be as soon as we can get the application up and running. If you approve this tonight, hopefully at the beginning of next week. It doesn't take us a long time to turn money around. And then, once we expense it, we're able to submit for reimbursement to Fresno County. And then for the third item that we are still working with Fresno County on to know for sure, would be a rental assistance program. So any residents who have become past due on their rent and would be possibly facing eviction at the end of the state's eviction moratorium could apply for this program. They would have to prove that they either were laid off due to COVID or they had their hours reduced at work due to COVID. And there would be an application process for that. So in my mind, the way that it would work is that first priority is going to be roughly fourteen thousand dollars. We're still working on that calculation of sick leave, but it'll be roughly fourteen thousand dollars, give or take. And then initially, we would allocate about eighty thousand dollars for the small businesses, and then whatever is remaining for the rental assistance, and that would have a cap. So it's not going to pay someone's full amount of what they're behind in rent, but it may be like fifteen hundred dollars or a two thousand dollar cap. And then we have only until December thirtieth to have all of the money spent. And so the plan would be, like, if we didn't have enough businesses apply for the business grant where we used all eighty thousand dollars in the application period, then whatever balances remaining would move into the rental assistance program.
That's good, thank you.
And what happens if we have extra money in the rental assistance program as well? Do we have a backup plan for that?
I don't believe that we will have that, that issue, because I believe that there'll be enough applicants. But we could possibly do a second round of business grants or something. I don't anticipate that happening because it'll kind of flow from the first priority to the second to the third. But if that is a possibility, we definitely want to spend it all and not leave any money on the table because it benefits the people in our community.
Okay, and we'll be telling the business owners how to apply and as well as the people who need rental assistance?
Yes.
Yeah, and that'll go out in the newspaper also.
Yes, so once we have all of the information, it'll be on the city website, it'll be on the city Facebook page. I'm sure Mary will put it in the paper. And another thing is, unfortunately, we don't have, when businesses apply for their business license, a lot of them don't include like email addresses. But at the beginning, when COVID first started, I had posted on Facebook and asked any businesses that needed assistance to send me an email with a contact email address. So I do have a list of business email addresses for those who have responded. So my plan was also to notify people via email if I have a business email address.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say what the total grant was again, so everybody would know. The total grant was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. So that's, that's a lot of money for Colinga. Still not enough, but it's pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and that's coming from our, our board of supervisors as a whole, too, not just one supervisor. They, that was a unanimous decision to pass it through to us, to all, all the cities in Fresno County.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through thirteen?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Stolt?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson? Mayor Lander?
Aye.
Okay, our next item is ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. We have two items. Our first item is council direction requesting city staff to research the opportunity of rezoning the city-owned property located at the southwest corner of Alpine and Jane Avenue in order to accommodate outdoor cannabis cultivation. Sean Brewer.
Thank you, mayor and council. This was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Atkinson. Staff is seeking direction if this is something that the council would like to have staff research and then provide kind of a report back at a future meeting. So at this time, I'll kind of leave it up to Councilman Atkinson to provide an additional detail or direction to get from the council.
Adam, go ahead.
So I've been, yeah, I've been trying to find ways that we can generate more revenue throughout the city. And one of these things that we have is about four hundred and forty acres or somewhere around that amount, located, like it says, on Jane and Alpine, which is in between Sandalwood and the prison, but more toward the prison than Sandalwood. It's, it's been sitting there for years, it's not being utilized. We can easily set aside, I would say, let's try ten acres set aside for growth. If we could get a cannabis company to come and do outdoor grow on ten acres as far outside the city, we could make millions in revenue. So I would like just to at least look into it, at the very least, see if that's something that's possible. I think, Sean, I think you have a better idea of what the best strategy would be to go about something like that. But as a council, I would definitely like us to at least look into it.
Sean?
Yeah.
Isn't that, isn't a big portion of that property designated for a future sewer plant?
So just a little history on the property. Yeah, it was, it was originally annexed quite a few years ago for public facilities because, yes, it was going to be the, the site of the future wastewater treatment plant. I think it, the future wastewater treatment plant was not going to use more than about maybe ten acres, fifteen acres. So it wouldn't have taken up a lot. I think when we originally were doing some design work, and then we found out that we, the feasibility of moving the sewer plant was going to be tremendous, a tremendous cost and rates were going to skyrocket based on the lack of development at the time. It's a non-contiguous parcel, which means it's not attached to the existing city limits. It is in the city limits, but it's similar to like the state hospital and the state prison where they are kind of island parcels or island annexed pieces of land that's under city control. So these are things that, that staff would have to look at. So definitely, it wouldn't probably impede on, you know, the possibility of being able to move the wastewater plant there in the future if that's where the city would, would decide to move it in the future, although I don't know what the feasibility is of that in this current climate. We would have to reach out to the county and LAFCO to review any kind of stipulations that might be in place related to the previous annexation, because typically the only way you annex property that are non-contiguous to the existing city limits would be for public use facilities similar to that of the airport or the state hospital, state prison, or, you know, a future wastewater treatment plant facility. However, I'm not sure if there's any future stipulations that would prevent us from either rezoning it, making it agricultural land. So there's other, there's, there's rezoning it, making it agricultural land, so there's other, there's, there's, there could be an opportunity, I don't know at this point, but I would, you know, if we get direction from the council to research it, staff would be more than happy to look into it and look at what the options are for the city to utilize that parcel.
Any other comments or questions, Council? Seeing none, what is your direction? What do you want Sean to do? Do you want him to look into it further, or just leave it as it is?
I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
Is, what type of cannabis is that going to be for? Is that going to be for hemp or cannabis?
Hemp is not cannabis, and it's not regulated by the federal government. This is for cannabis.
That's, that's not what I asked. You don't need to mansplain me when I ask a question.
That's what I just told you, so, that's what I just told you.
Okay, Ron, I, I think we could go ahead and look into this and see what, what we could do with it.
Okay, Sean, Mike, the direction, I think, is just go ahead and get back to us with what you find out. But I do remember very clearly, like you said, that the stipulation for the island annexation was for public use or a public facility, if, however you said that.
Is Mario on the line?
I was thinking it was the one in between.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mario, yes.
What do you think about this? Is this something you think we can do?
It really just depends on, yeah, I mean, normally, you could, and so, the only thing that, and me and Sean have talked about, the only thing that we're not aware, we need to do the research to see whether there were any stipulations on, on the use when we, when we first caught it, but I don't, barring that, I don't think there should be an issue.
And let's say there are, is that normal for stipulations to be in?
For island annexations, there are, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's really this island, because it's not contiguous. So, normally, you know, when, when you have these islands that are outside, you know, usually it's represented to, to LAFCO that, hey, this is why we're doing it, it's an island, because we're going to run a sewer, wastewater treatment, whatever it is out there, and that's kind of the intent, and they say, okay, well, we're going to let you have this land that's not normally connected. And so, so that's, that's normal in those kind of situations.
So, let's see if we can do it, and then if we can't, maybe we can meet with the county supervisors and see if we can get that changed.
It's not up to supervisors, it's up to LAFCO.
Or LAFCO, whoever.
Right. Okay, there you have your direction. Okay, our next item is council consideration of the League of California Cities 2020 Annual Conference Resolutions. Marissa?
Thank you. So, even though the item says resolutions, it sort of implies that there's multiple, and usually there is, but this year, there's only one, and so, we need to know if the council would like to, how the council would like to instruct the voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. So, this item, I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at it, but I will say it for the public's benefit in case they haven't pulled it up. What they are asking is if the council would like to vote in favor of this resolution that basically says, "The intent of the resolution is to address the use of social media platforms for posting information that leads followers to meet and commit crimes, and to also hold these platforms and the persons who post said information civilly and criminally accountable for all costs incurred by the local jurisdictions where the crimes occurred."
Pretty upfront and to the point. So...
They're asking, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, are they asking that the social media platforms are now going to be held liable for?
That is the person who posts and the social media platform.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous to try and say that the social media platform should be held liable. All this is going to do is to lead to more censorship by social media groups like Facebook, Instagram, and so forth, and the censorship always goes one way. Every single time, one group of people are censored, sent, censored, and the other group are not. And we all know which way, and which groups will be censored, and which groups will not. And this is exactly where this will lead if the state decides to go through with this.
Any other comments?
Don't we, I have a comment. Doesn't the city traditionally vote with the league?
Not at all. Most of the time, it does.
We have on many occasions, but not always.
Yes, got it.
Yeah, in the past, they've, there's usually stuff like this gets amended, and it changes, a lot of things change as it goes. So, I would say if we, if we do vote on this, we look at it and, oh, heck, I, well, I was going to say whoever our voting rep, let them decide if, if we do. I mean, right now, I don't, I don't think we're going to have a voting rep to go, because right now, it's three hours, I mean, three days of the whole day on the computer. And right now, Ron works, I'm retired, I do stuff with my grandkids and stuff, so, and I don't think we have anybody that would really do it, and I don't want to waste money getting on the, paying for the registration and going through this, because I don't care who, who the person is, I don't think that it would benefit the city that much.
Did we already pay for this, or no?
No, I don't think we have.
No.
Perfect, let's not even go then.
You know what? I am inclined to agree with you 200%. I can't be online for three days, you know, I'm trying to still make a living.
Yeah, and that's all computer, too, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so, agreed?
Agreed.
Is that, or may I concur? Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is city managers' announcements.
I have none.
Council members' announcements? Mayor's announcements? At this time, I have none. Are there any future agenda items? Seeing none. We'll be going into closed session. We have one item, that is conference with labor negotiator, Government Code 54957.6, City Negotiators, City Manager, Marissa Trejo, City Attorney, Mario Zamora, Employee Organization, Non-Representative Employees, General Employees, and Colanga Police Officers Association. Thank you for your attendance and your participation. Everyone have a safe and sane weekend. Thank you.